The Chesapeake Beach Town Council. Note for the record that all of the council members are present. This is the town administrator. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Join me, please.
Pledge of Allegiance. Of the United States of Maryland. To the Republic for which it is. One nation, under God, indivisible.
Council, you have the agenda in front of you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. There's the opportunity for the public to make a comment on any item on the agenda, and there is one item on the agenda. Does anybody in the public wish to make a comment on any item in the agenda? Hearing none, we're going to jump right into it. I'll read it. Introduce and vote on emergency ordinance EO dash twenty-five dash one, an emergency ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the adopted general fund budget for the fiscal year July one, two thousand and twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five to appropriate additional funds to pay the town administrator's salary. So the ordinance, council members, you have the ordinance in front of you. And going to the meat of it. The annual budget. If you go down to section one after all the whereas is. The annual budget, I'll read this. The annual budget for the general fund at Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five is hereby amended to reflect an additional appropriation from line item one hundred dash four-three-zero-one-three-zero, transfer in GF fund balance in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars and the addition of funds in an equivalent amount to expense line item one hundred dash six thousand dash six oh-two-zero-zero salaries and wages. And it says the rest of it all remains in effect. The reason that we are, find ourselves in the position where we have to do this is that the previous administration depleted the salary budget by giving a, a very generous compensation to the previous town administrator as severance pay, even though she resigned, which I find very interesting. But at this point, what we need to do, what this council needs to do is to do whatever is necessary in order for us to pay our new town administrator, Samelia Akpodu. So I would open the floor for questions, comments. Actually, let's, let's see. Is there a motion for approval? Let's start with that. Okay, thank you. And a second, please?
A second.
Okay, we have about three seconds. Now, any comments or questions on this issue? Is it clear? Everybody good with it?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I, I just have a question. Is this compensation greater or less than previously? Just so I had a point of reference.
Samelia is being compensated at a less than, substantially less than Holly Wall was. Holly Wall was taking a very large, at a very large salary.
Thank you.
Other questions? Is there a, we have a motion. I will take the vote unless there's any more questions. Go ahead, Eric.
I guess just for the public record, what was Holly's salary?
I'm not sure I want to be.
The next meeting, right? There's a PIA for that. Next meeting.
Okay, so we'll deal, we'll deal with that as it comes up. Okay, Eric? Okay.
Yes, and I had, I had some questions for Samelia earlier today, and I just want to thank Samelia for addressing them right away. And my questions were just whether or not the tennis courts and the pump station that were funded on December fourth would remain in effect and funding would be allocated, and the answer was yes.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll deal with that in the work session. Okay.
Thank you, Samelia.
Okay. All right, I'll take a vote then. All in favor of approval of this adoption of this ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
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 Abstains. The motion carries. All right. Is there a motion for adjournment of the emergency meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I knew I could count on you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, well, motion is second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. All right, the special session is, the special meeting is adjourned. Now we will move into the work session. I call the meeting to order. The roll call remains the same. We've already done the Pledge of Allegiance, so I don't see any need to do that again. So this is a, this list that is on this work session agenda was developed by members of the council prior to being inducted into office or installed in office. These are the issues that, the campaign issues that my colleagues here raised and that are frankly very important to them and very important to the citizens of the town. So I think that we'll just take these in order, and we can start with the tennis courts. The MOU is Board of Education. And did you want to jump in on this?
Sure, yes.
Is your mic on? Yes. Just hold it close so that you can be heard back there. Speak close to it.
Okay. Thank you. I asked for the existing tennis court MOU to be added to the agenda so that council would have the benefit of seeing it and identifying any items within the MOU that they would have an issue with that would cause them not to want to sign the MOU so that we can resolve those issues. The tennis courts were made part of the site plan of the Beach Elementary School as existing courts, but they are in disrepair. And this MOU allows for the town of Chesapeake Beach to fund the replacement of the courts and to use the courts out of school hours, as has been the case historically for thirty-five years. And it allows the BO, the Board of Education to retain the land. And there's a lot of complications with giving the land to the town. So what we're looking to do is maintain the historical use of the tennis courts, fund them, get them in great shape for the community to use them. It's something that everybody is in favor of that I talked to on the campaign trail. And and the previous administration moved it forward quite a bit. So they've allocated funding for it in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars on December fourth. They've met with the, both the BOE and the Calvert County about replacing the courts. And basically, what's needed now is we need to come up with a memorandum of agreement with the Board of Education, sign it, and then presumably they would take on the construction of the pro, of the, the project. In your packet, you have some questions that I asked the Calvert County Administrator and his answers. And then you have the existing memorandum of understanding as it was left by the previous administration. So Anthony was kind enough to set up a meeting between me, Anthony, and Dr. Townsall on July seventh, or July, January seventeenth. So if everybody on the council could just review the MOU and let both of us know if you have any issues with anything in the memorandum, because I would hope to vote on this as soon as possible. The county administrator did say that this would have to go out for bid, which is a, a several month process to get the construction approved underway. So it really is time sensitive. We need to vote on it and move it forward. And I appreciate any sponsorship from the mayor and Samelia that can help move this forward.
Well, thank you for, for bringing this up. And so we'll just have this on the agenda for approval at our next regular meeting next week. Sharon, any, anything else that I need to do here? I think we're good. You're all, did you have questions? Yeah, sure, go ahead.
This is a good time for that.
It's the only time.
Okay. Well, then, it's an excellent time.
I agree.
So, sorry, I have not reviewed all these documents yet, but maybe you can save me some time since you've spent a lot of time digging into this. So what exactly are some of the nuances of the idea of having the land ceded to the town?
The land will not be ceded to the town. It, it will remain as it has historically. The land will be the BO, the Board of Education's. We will fund the courts, and the Board of Education will own the courts. So the memorandum of understanding is a use agreement.
Right, but you said that there were some complications with the idea of the BOA seeding the land to the town? I'm just wondering what they were.
So that, that was a holdup with the other administration. They wanted to try to get that completed. Some of it was money. From what I understand, the, the, there was some mitigation that was done, and the, the whole construction project had mitigation done around the courts. And to give the land back, they'd owe some more money back. I, I would have to look further into exactly what the holdup was. Another reason would be that's an acquisition. So that becomes very complicated.
Well, I mean, we've done it before with Calhoun's.
And so there is, let me get back to you on that because there was an answer about that from the county administrator in one of my emails. So let me just get back to you on a fuller answer to that. But the bottom line is all parties agree that that was not going to happen. And if we were to further pursue that, we would delay the courts and potentially cause the Board of Education to owe money back on the project.
So it's, it was also my understanding from attending some work sessions of the previous administration that the contract between the Board of Education and the town as far as constructing the elementary school, that there was a clause within the contract saying that the Board of Education was responsible for refurbishing the tennis courts.
I have never seen that clause. But I, I was on planning and zoning, and the site plans have always said existing tennis courts. And my understanding was always that it was going to fall under a memorandum of understanding and agreement.
I guess if we weren't pushing this the way we are, you know, does the Board of Education have any? Or has they, have they had any plans for the tennis courts? Or are they just planning on letting them sit there as is?
So the, the, the failure of the governments to work this out prior to, you know, during the construction of the tennis courts is why they're in the shape they're in.
So they don't have a plan?
No, they're, they're, everybody's left in the lurch. The town people are left in the lurch. The Board of Education is left in the, in the lurch. This was an opportunity for governments to work together. It was always my understanding that the Board of Education agreed as existing courts, and we had agreed to fund them, and then we would split the use, like we always have historically for years and years and years.
And if I may interject, correct me if I'm wrong, but I understood that the Board of Education simply did not have the money to make the improvements themselves. And so if we did not make the improvements, it was not, nothing was going to happen. If we didn't fund it, they're going to sit there just like they are now, which is really, doesn't serve the citizens of the town at all. And so I think that's a major component to this.
This MOU is pretty much what's holding it up right now. Like, once we, once we agree on the language, which is already written in here, and we sign it, and then we can proceed with funding it, basically.
That's my understanding that.
That would take additional legislation here to fund it. But yes, I, but this, yeah.
Pat mentioned something about state funding. So that's something that I've tried to look into a little bit.
I, I was just in, you know, Pat, the previous administration used a lobbyist in Annapolis who I've met once, and I was in touch with her today, but I didn't mention this subject to her. But I can pursue that, so.
And there's also a Mike Miller grant, too. We have like three hundred thousand that we can use for grant money.
Not aware of that.
So it's my understanding that ordinance twenty-four-twenty-one allocated three hundred thousand dollars into the budget for this. So we have already.
I'm, I'm sorry. What was the number again?
Three hundred thousand.
That's what we think the budget's going to be on this?
That's.
Two seventy-four. So three hundred.
What you're saying is that it's already been approved by the previous council, is that correct?
It's correct.
It's already been approved.
Yeah, so if we get state money, it might be something that has, like, we fund it now, and maybe they can reimburse us.
Well, just to be clear, the three hundred thousand, I thought that was the state money that Mahoney had talked about going and talked to them about to get a few hundred thousand.
I'm not clear, Sharon.
That needs to be clarified.
Town council had voted to approve allocation of three hundred thousand. It was my understanding. So a variance. I think when the school was built, that was, there was a variance that they would seed the tennis, not give us the tennis courts, but that the town would have the tennis, tennis courts. It was part of the variance, I understand, in the agreement with the Board of Education and the new school.
Yeah, the use of the tennis courts was part of the agreement. But the language says use. And so historically, our schoolchildren, Beach Elementary School children, did use the tennis courts on a rainy day during school hours. And the town people used the tennis courts during all non-school hours. And everybody was happy with that agreement. It's Chesapeake Beach kids that go to Beach Elementary. So for, for my part, if the Board of Education wants to use the tennis courts during the day, during the school hours, to allow kids to play outside when they otherwise couldn't, that makes me thrilled because that's what the tennis courts were used for by the Board of Education. The only reason they kept them was because we asked them to. And so they did. And for me, to pay for the tennis courts, the Board of Education has agreed to keep this memorandum in place for the life of the courts. So if you really want to do the math of three hundred thousand dollars divided by twenty-five years, it's, it's a small price to pay. We would pay much more trying to find land, get a new project, get it underway. People would wait years to have courts to play on. To me, this is a no-brainer. We figure out how to make it work, and we get the tennis courts up and running.
Well, I think what we've done in the past as far as working with the county, well, because I just don't see any reason that the Board of Education would want to keep the land. And it would be like a resolution where we just, it's a, it's an opinion or a statement of the council sent to the Board of Education saying, hey, you know, we would like you to cede the land to us. And then we see what kind of official response they give. Do we have some type of official communication with the Board of Education related to the topic of the land changing hands?
From what I understand, they went all through that last year. And that is why we have no courts, because that was not resolved.
Doesn't also Park and Rec have some piece?
Parks and Rec is out of it. Parks and Rec, it's not enough courts for Park, Parks and Rec to run, say, a ladder.
But I thought last year that Parks and Rec actually, it wasn't the Board of Education who closed the courts. It was Parks and Rec who actually, after they opened it, when the school opened, then Parks and, originally, the, the tennis courts were open. And then within a month, they were closed. But I had heard that the discussion that there's a piece that Maryland National Capital Park and Planning has some piece of the tennis courts.
I mean, unless we're talking directly to these people, we only know what was put out by the previous administration. What we have before us is a memorandum of understanding. We have three hundred thousand dollars already allocated. We have a future meeting with Dr. Townsall. We know that it will take a bidding process and a construction process to get the courts up and running. And, and the real question is, how are we going to get the courts up and running? And are we going to go around in a circle like the last administration did over things that they already went through?
But of course, the answer to that is no, because we just need line action. That's, that's, that's just the place to talk. So right now, it's about seeing about if, what happened on paper about getting the land. And that'll make sure that Eric is straight on that, right?
But I don't think, I don't think that the land comes to us. The land remains with the Board of Education.
So just so we can have it somewhere, because it has to be written somewhere, or.
Well, yeah. Here during the last administration, we're, you know. Do you recall any resolution sent, passed by the council and sent to the Board of Education requesting the land be ceded to the town or anything like that?
I, I don't know of the exact legislation or how it worked, but I do know the town was trying to pursue gaining the land so they could control it if they were going to fund it. That was one of the pushing items. If we were going to fund it, we would like to own it. And they did pursue.
Seems to make a lot of sense to me.
They did pursue it. I do not know the reasons why it was not entertained, but I know the town did pursue that.
Okay, so. But that's something that we can definitively find out and make sure. We know it's three hundred thousand somewhere. We need to know exactly where that came from. So if that's not from the state, we need to understand that there's still money somewhere from the state that Mahoney put in place to allocate for the tennis courts. We need to get the agreement straight. We also got to look at the insurance, right? Is that something separate?
Insurance is something separate. There's part of the memorandum of understanding asking us to hold insurance for the property. And so there's definitely some questions about how the insurance works. And I think probably I would need to meet with Samelia about that and ask that you stay in contact with Dr. Townsall on the insurance piece.
So it really makes sense for us to really look at this MOU, get all our questions in place, know what needs to go to the county, know what needs to go to BOE so that we can get those questions answered, that we can get everything on paper so that we can understand how to move forward so we don't end up with the same issue we have for the last four years.
Yeah, the county, the county doesn't want anything to do with it. I emailed Buddy Hans, and he said the county wants nothing to do with the courts. So I have, I have correspondence from him. He's a county commissioner.
So I mean, we can just take a flag and claim it and say it's ours?
The county doesn't, they don't want any.
Right, and this is between the BOE and the town. The county is not involved in this. The county government is not involved.
So now takes my part out.
Hey, Lori, I would ask, like, for your meeting on the, the seventeenth, could you, could you talk to him a little bit about the, the hours piece in here? So I understand why that made sense before the new school because the kids would come out and they'd play in that very small playground. And then they would go into the tennis courts because they didn't have a whole lot of play space. The new school pushes back, and then they have a large playground in the back area. I don't know if the kids are actually going to the tennis courts now. Obviously, it's shut down, but I don't know if there's a desire from the principal for the kids to go all the way down and use it where there could be a potential opportunity for us to open this more than just the weekends and holidays.
Well, what should we be looking at?
Well, I'm just saying, like, like, does it need to be there? And then, you know, there could be a clause in this that says if the, if the principal of the school says we need it, then, then they would have priority, and they could ask people to leave. I think that's pretty, pretty straightforward. Just, just something to bring up. And then the other piece I wanted to mention was they say the town will, wanted to see if it's possible to, to talk to them about mutual indemnification on the back where it says just the town will indemnify the, hold them harmless. Where I think they should also hold us harmless as well. Maybe, maybe we can place that word in there as well.
Yeah, have that language in there.
Yeah.
So.
I, I wouldn't want to hold up for that, but I would, I think it's worth at least a conversation.
Yes, we will definitely have that conversation. I, I believe that conversation's been had a couple times, and it's more school, Board of Education type of rules that we can't get around, but we will have that conversation.
Obviously, this is a work session, so we're only discussing this. We're not voting on this tonight. So we've raised some good questions, and I think we need to make sure that we have the questions and know where to find the answers, and then have that, have that information prepared for our next meeting when we likely would vote on this or at our regular council meeting. So let's, if we can make sure that we have all, all of your questions documented tonight, I think that's, that's all we need to do tonight.
Right.
Okay? And, and I appreciate this conversation. I'm, I'm glad to see this, this council communicating like this. This is very exciting.
Kathleen wants to say something?
Yeah, I, I have a question. On page two, it talks about the use of the tennis courts at Beach Elementary. And it says for non-school sponsored request that they've got to be approved by the Board of Ed. And I just wonder, what's the turnaround for that? You know, how long will it take them to approve? These are for non-school sponsored events that we might want to hold there. So I just want to make sure that this is under use of, page two, use of tennis courts at Beach Elementary School. Under the, the purple underlined area, it says the public shall have open and free access to the courts. Okay. But it says that for non-school sponsored requests for use during designated times that the town is in control, they, that request has to be submitted for, to the Board of Education for approval. And my question is, how long? What's the turnaround for the BOE? I, I certainly don't want us to miss an event because we're waiting, that approval just drags on. So if you could find out, you know, what our turnaround, turnaround time would be for the BOE's approval.
Lori, have you been, you've been in direct touch with the Board of Education, right?
I have been in direct touch with the county administrator, but not the Board of Education.
Okay. So that's a good question.
So, so we're meeting with Dr. Townsall.
Oh, okay. On the seventeenth.
On the seventeenth.
Okay.
And that's why we, we need your questions and, and what your sticking points would be.
That's good.
For this memorandum.
Trying to vote on this next, next Thursday?
No.
We need your questions. We need to meet with Dr. Townsall. And then we need to get a memorandum in place that everybody can agree on so that we can vote on it. So we would, we would also need to meet with the Board of Education, or Dr. Townsall would need to facilitate the memorandum to the Board of Education. But what was happening prior to this was the Board of Education and the county administrator, Holly, were all meeting trying to work this out. But for one reason or another, every time it came forward, there was a sticking point. And so I would really like to avoid having a sticking point on our side, because that's what happened last time.
Okay. Well, I think, I think we have a way forward. I mean, we have these meetings coming up, and, and this has been an excellent discussion.
Yeah, so, so really going over and getting your questions in so that we'll be ready for next Friday to be able to get that stuff from the Board of Education, then the stuff we can get in-house to find out where anything went wrong or how it fell apart or faltered. So we can have actual answers to these questions and then we can vote with a clearer console.
So I guess I just, just to put a bow on it, my, my main questions would be, you know, are they, i- i- is there a pathway for them to cede the land? If, if not, I mean, if not, if, if not, then there's not, but I'd be interested to know why. And then the, I'm, I am concerned about the, the mixed use versus ownership and the insurance. And then the one other thing that I'd like to see happen, and I know we want to go, 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 but if there are grants out there, it would be nice to have that, have that process somewhere where we, we would know if there's a decision, do we have a decision on grants? Or do we have any thoughts about optimism and getting a grant? You know, I'd like, I'd like to kind of know where the funding's coming from for sure, other than to just say, well, the town's going to pay for it. And hopefully we can figure out how to get reimbursed later.
And that's another reason why we need to find out for sure where the 300,000 we have from now and what the other money that we were talking about coming from the state. If, if those are two separate things, if, because if we have 600,000, then we need to know that for sure.
So what I would ask is.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I, I did that to you, so say sorry for me to you. What I would ask is that when you're sending these questions about the grants, et cetera, we need to know if, if your vote is going to be contingent on a grant. Because the reality is they may or may not be available. Obviously, we are going to pursue receiving any money that we can.
Good point.
Grants can, grants can be elusive and you can wait years and years and years on a grant. So if you could just include that.
Okay, thank you. Josh has something to contribute.
Yeah, I was able to find out the $300,000 that was discussed regarding the, or the, uh, test courts. In the November council meeting, there was a new business item for town council to consider allocating $300,000 in funds set aside for future improvements in the removal and replacement of the Board of Education-owned Beach Elementary School tennis courts. This allocation requires a general fund budget amendment to account for the funds necessary to make improvements and sources of funding to be determined by the town council. And it was voted on and approved five to one.
Thank you.
So that means that the, the verbiage that Mahoney used about having something coming from the state is different. Right? So then we need to figure out what that's about now.
I, I tried to go down that path. I didn't get too far. But I, I reached out to Jeff Long with the state and he gave me somebody's contact that I emailed. I haven't heard back from him yet.
Right.
One more question. So I know this is a hot button item for this council and, and lots of people did talk about it on the campaign. I did not. So I guess I'm interested to know where the intense interest for these courts is coming from, just in general. Just like when you talk to people, what did they, what kind of, was it, was it everybody you talked to? Was it just, was it really focused on the school kids? Was it, uh, like, who, I, I, that's, that's my question.
Oh, it, it was most people that felt like a town with three very, very lucrative businesses and a good tax base should be able to fund tennis courts and help the BOE, especially in a year where there's the blueprint they were up against. They had to look at their salaries. And they've been used in a certain way historically. So the assumption by the public was that we would still be able to use them, but yet they went down. So when I went door to door, most people wanted the tennis courts and didn't understand why they just went down, especially when, when there was this potential to have them done. And the potential was to have them done with the construction of the school. Now that's, that's a little bit more complicated because we have to have our own new construction project. You know, do you want a percentage of numbers? I can't do that. We can, we can, we can make this go around in circles for as long as we want. Or we can just get it done. So that's, that's kind of the question for us. Are we going to ask, you know, all the same questions that were asked all year? And overcomplicate it? Or are we just going to get tennis courts up and running for our citizens?
Well, you know, one of my concerns is that, like, okay, we would, we would pay for it, right? But it seems like this is not just paying for it, but also creating some type of liability entanglement with, with the Board of Education. I mean, they should just be happy we're paying for it, right?
Um, I, I think that's a decent point to bring up. Because I know when we go to Wendy Hill Middle School and there's soccer going on, something with the rec, my kids play on the playground, but I, you know, I, I don't know that there's some kind of insurance agreement for my kids playing on the playground off school hours. I, I would be interested to find out. So I think you do raise a good point there with the insurance. The insurance is, is an interesting, complicated piece that I am also interested in hammering out.
Well, I just want to say, I mean, I live up by the campgrounds and the, the major amenity or one of the, I think, three amenities in this town are Kellum Field, the water park and the tennis courts. And my neighborhood uses those tennis courts daily. And, and they were heartsick after the, the school was open. They couldn't wait. In fact, they had inquired, how long would the tennis courts be blocked off for the construction of the school? And then the school opened again. And then a month later, the tennis courts. So I think they're a great amenity to the town. And I certainly agree with Councilmember Blackweller. It's, it's one of those amenities that the town absolutely can afford to support. And, and I think that people, I, I don't even think it's a big deal. It's a, I mean, it's a tennis court and, I mean, historically people have played there. They've even inquired, the planning and zoning commission actually sent a letter from the commission because it was so important to, to resolve this matter so the tennis courts could be reopened. And the planning and zoning commission rarely endorses a specific issue, but they did present a letter to the mayor saying, we would like to see this resolved and the tennis courts reopened as soon as possible. So I think it's a, a very important and significant amenity to the town.
Debbie, did you want to add something? You'll have to come up to the mic. I, I, I don't know if you're familiar with it.
Hey there, I'm Debbie Buckingham with 3806 28th Street. And you raised a question about the residents. Well, I'm one of these residents. And it's kind of interesting on your little agenda today. Two out of the three things that our kids need in our town is on this agenda. A tennis court is needed for these kids. They need something to do. Now, the other thing I addressed on this tennis court issue, I've read your MOU front and back, is it says communities. Which is the community? Are you going to allow North Beach to come together with us and allow everybody to participate? You got to iron that out in that MOU. The $300,000 was in the budget. It was voted on. I heard Patrick tell us that it was going to be grant at one point, but he's told us a lot in the past. I think an audit must be done eventually, but you're fighting over things that the kids need. Take into consideration, these residents come to Chesapeake Beach for family activities. Water park, tennis court, the beaches. Allow them to have that and quit bickering. All right? Let her answer the questions. Let her get her answers and then come back to you. The residents want these activities. And let's all come together. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. All right, I'd like to move on because we're now on item one of eight.
Yeah.
We've been at it for 40 minutes. So I think at the rate that we're going, that's going to be six hours that we're going to be.
Oh, everything is going to be.
The next one's a big one, too.
Just want to go real quick.
So let's move on to the next one. The water park. Status on the engineering study results. Jay, were you going to present, who's going to present this?
I think we just got him back yesterday. We met with the engineer who's not here tonight, but will be here at the council meeting. And I think that's where we're going to go public with it, if you will.
Okay.
And he's, was going to do a summary because I read through it. It's about this thick and it's a lot of technical terms. We asked him to give us a summary in layman's terms.
Why don't you, why, I, we had that meeting this afternoon. So why don't you give us the three minute summary of where we ended up today? And, and.
As far as the, the study, I think it's dealing with Wayne Newton. It was what we were suspect of the entire time when they, when they examined what's under the park, organic material that's settling over time, state highway, driving their piles through the bridge did not help some settlement issues. But there, I would say there's nothing surprising in that report. Confirmed that the actual piles at the bottom location, as far as holding the weight are okay. We have to look into, since the ground level and the sea level has risen, the top of the piles are, they're showing rot. There's a little bit more investigation, but it's all in that report. But I would say there's nothing in there that we were not suspect of or the engineer was not suspect of. It was more of confirming existing conditions.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Eric.
And so from what my understanding was, from the understanding of existing conditions in the previous administration, that we're talking about not just doing a patch job, but kind of a rebuild type situation. Is that, is that still what we're talking about or? Because I know Bruce was hoping that maybe we could do something a little less expensive and something a little quicker to get it open.
Yeah, you take it, Jay.
So I know what the mayor had said he could do and was thinking about doing. And we met once he was elected. And I basically said that there's no way we could open safely this year to do that. I think we are exploring the cost of retrofitting and fixing things and moving on, making it safe is my priority. Versus a total teardown and rebuild. And we're preliminarily plugging in some numbers. We met with the engineer today, looking at all aspects. And I've, you know, I spoke with the mayor and everyone up here that earned their seat. My job is to keep the boat running. I'm down in the engine room. You guys are steering it and I'm on board with whatever we want to do. But I am going to make sure it's safe, it's viable for the public, it's viable for my staff. As far as, does it make money, lose money? Does it, right amount of people, what you're going to sell is food? I don't care. My job is to make it safe if that's the way we're going. And what we can do, I've been there 20 years. You know, I, I told the mayor, my first day when I started here, I was on a leak at the water park. And my next day I was on a water main break. I should have known then, but there, there's a lot of.
By the water, you know?
Yeah, there's a lot of institutional knowledge. There's things that happen. It's a 30-year-old park. There's a lot of questions out there, but I think we can look at all the options. The other side of it is, we're talking about MOUs with tennis courts. We're talking about building a sidewalk from Chesapeake Village that's been six years in the planning and permits, right? So the reality of thinking we're going to demo this park, get permits and have this thing online within five years? I'm just throwing that out there. So there's pros and cons of both ways. And I think the mayor has decided, let's look into what would it take? What are the prices? Can we retrofit it? Can we make it safe? We'll still have issues, but I think we can explore this, move forward and go down that path.
Yeah, I, I want to double down on Eric, just Jay, to be really transparent, clear on this. Like based off of what you read in that report and your experience out there, because the previous council was adamant that we had to tear it down. I mean, that, like, that was the only three plans that were presented. There was not a retrofit, an upgrade, you know, fix it plan. In your professional opinion and what you read in that report, is it fixable?
I think anything's fixable if you have enough money. You know, and in, in a perfect analogy, you have a 30-year-old car. Are you, and that's worth $2,000 blue book? Are you going to put $10,000 into it? Right? The reality is no matter what we build, it's still exposed 24/7, 365 to snow, wind, weather, rain, saltwater bay. The, and I'm not the engineer and I want him to speak to that. The piles that are driven, as we were suspect, they're actually okay. The problem is the footprint of the park is outside of the piles. So there will definitely be issues that we will, if we retrofit, that we will suffer its life moving forward. We can address them. They will take time, money. But those are, I'm going to say, a product of the nature of it. They're not going to be safety issues if move forward with everything that I've implemented as our staff and accessing these areas. The other questions of that, what does it cost? What are the pros and cons? I think we got to get into that versus the price and the timing of a total rebuild. And what would it cost to retrofit, improve? And what's the life of that? Those things I think we're dwelling into right now.
And in the meetings that we, that we have already had, the initial thought is that to do the repair and retrofit will be less expensive and faster than a total rebuild. I believe that's what I, where, where we were today when we were discussing this with Wayne today. And so, and then from my point of view, if we built one of those three plans that have been presented, it doesn't provide the amenities that the current park does. So from my point of view, it makes sense to go down the path of repairing it and rebuilding it as is or similar to what it is. And where we have the 30 years of experience of what hasn't worked because of our, the geology and everything else, make corrections there where we can, so it'll last quite a bit longer. And, and, but the, the sad but unfortunate thing is nothing, there's nothing we can do to get it open this year. No matter what we choose to do, it isn't going to open this year. And the, the warm weather is when a lot of the work will have to be done because it can't be done in the cold weather, like concrete work and all that kind of stuff. And so I saw you had, did you raise your hand?
Yeah. My thing is people's kids are growing up now. So do we want to wait six, seven years to replace the whole thing? Or do we want to try to get it up and running safely? And you feel like confident that we can do that and, and get it like future proof as much as we can?
I, I think, and I've met with the mayor, the engineer, and we've talked about this in depth. I think we can come to the council relatively shortly with some budgetary numbers versus, you know, in speaking with Wayne, I don't want to speak about permitting and processes, but I'm just looking at history, you know, what it takes to get a permit, just a permit. I mean, for example, the storm drain pipe on the field that we own, we paid for, we maintain and we installed the pipe. Took us 18 months to get a permit just to install that pipe. That's a pipe in a field that we own that's pretty cut and dry. You can imagine the level of permitting to do a demo, a total rebuild. And I'm not saying that's not the right way to go. Don't get me wrong. Because I'll be honest, for me, Jay Barryson in Public Works, I wouldn't have to work on that thing for many years. I know moving forward, the way we're going to go, it's going to be work and it's going to be things. My goal is to make it safe for my staff, make it safe for the public. Everything else to me is cosmetic, don't have an opinion on. Is it going to be self-sustaining, viable, make money? I don't care. My job is, I think, to, to guide, say, this is what we can do. Here's what we could do. Some of these things at the same time, while I'm going to make it safe for us and the public, we can address some of the other issues that have been a pain over the year. We have the summer, we can plan. And I think even after this entire year of work, maybe we open, which I think we can do. Soon as we shut down, there'll be another phase of this and we're going to try to fix some other areas. We'll never get away from the park is bigger than the piled footprint. But we can slowly retrofit and work around some of those things and make it better. It's built on a swamp. It will never be perfect. I don't care what we put there, what we retrofit, but I do think we can move forward. That gives us the control. We're not stuck with other entities and permitting processes. And I really think it's a five-year process if we went the other way, if we were lucky. You're talking about entire water park built on piles. We can't even get a plan for a sidewalk in six years. That's the reality. I'm not throwing anyone under the bus. I'm not blaming anyone. That's just a reality of the world today.
Yeah, and people's kids are growing up now, so we need our amenities back. And you said you'll get some budget numbers ASAP, but do you have any like kind of rough estimate? The new, the new park was going to cost over $7 million, I believe, so.
Correct. And there are some things I've got to look into. Correct, and there's some things I've got to look into, some stuff, I've already started that process. I met today with Samelia, the mayor, and Eva, engineer, and I really don't want to throw a number out right, right now. Um, I know we can retrofit it cheaper than obviously a new one, but you have to weigh that against the life and the, and the ongoing maintenance. So I think we can come up with these things relatively quickly and, and do this stuff this off season. Um, but I don't want to give you any kind of number to have more information.
Do you need anything from us, um, like ASAP to, to get your, to get you going?
Yep, $12 million.
I mean, are there other things you could start doing now that?
Um, I did, I did speak with the mayor, if, if he could have under his authorities, I'll give you an example. We, because the previous administration and council did not just say, let's shut the park down. There was a lot that went into it, a lot of experts weighed in, including the engineers. We flew people in from California, there's not too many people that build water parks, right? Um, there's not very many municipally owned water parks. There's a lot to it, this, this decision just didn't come overnight, someone said shut down the water park. There's a lot to it and there's going to be a lot to go the other way. But it would be nice, there's some stuff that we can do now. There's some, um, people out there that are experts, we could get in here, get some opinions, take the first fork in the road so we can plug in some numbers right now. Um, the sooner the better, because it sounds like we have all summer and all, that's not a long time. Um, so I think if the mayor can have the authority to say, hey, let's spend X amount, nothing crazy, just to get this process going, it's money well spent, then we'll have real numbers real soon and we can start doing what we decides best.
Well, maybe we can put our heads together and come up with that number and then put it on the agenda for the next regular council meeting. Next week.
Are we, are we, do we, do we need to go back and forth between retrofitting and rebuilding or doing something new? Like, can we automatically just say, okay, we're going to retrofit and rebuild what we have?
I think that's going to depend on what, what kind of budget numbers we get. If it's going to cost $5 million to repair it, then we might not want to, but it's 2 million or 3 million.
Uh, well, I'll be completely honest, everyone that we've brought in, three different entities that do this for a living, every one of them unanimously said tear it down. Um, now, of course, they build water parks, right? So, um, and, but I'm not disrespecting their opinion, I'm trying to be as transparent as I can. We've had an entire administration change and everything else, so we can get these answers quickly. Anything can be fixed, we just got to decide, is it viable, are we going to get the life out of it? But like I said, the cons are definitely, we build new, you're looking at five years, best case scenario. If we had a plan and a permit today to do this stuff, it takes time, investment. Um, so, you know, like I said, I just keep the ship running, you guys are going to steer it, I'm going to feed you with information. If we run into something that's undoable, we'll have to reboot. But until then, I say, we go with the plan.
And it, I know you had asked who's asking for this, I know, so when I was walking around, I, I think this was absolutely, outside of water and sewer rates, this was the number one thing that anybody talked about, was the water park. Um, I, I would ask, like, in addition, maybe to the structural aspect of it, um, is there an opportunity if we're already going to spend a significant amount of money fixing it? Can we put some into maybe the cosmetic side of it to, to touch it up and, and make it look new since it was shut down? Uh, it'd be a nice, nice touch i- if, if it makes sense. And then, uh, Samelia and Bruce, maybe like the, the asset I have is, the, one of the biggest problems that we had last year was transparency just on this, right? This was a, it was a, a black hole, you only heard what came out of here and, and actually your reports, Jay, that's all we heard. So, um, maybe there's an opportunity for us to over communicate, uh, especially if we had said the goal was to open this year and we know it's, uh, not possible. Uh, I think we owe it to the residents to over communicate, uh, why that's not possible and, and our plan of, of, of action to, uh, to get after something. And Eric, I think will, uh, approve all budgets, he's all for it, so. Is he picking?
Well, I, one, one, I will point out that one of the things that became, uh, obvious, uh, shortly after the election is a, as you all know, Marilyn, uh, Van Wagner was the manager of Water Park for years. And she's, she helped me on my campaign, she's a very close friend. And one of the things that she pointed out is that if the water park were, which I had hoped we could open it this year, didn't realize how bad it was, I, I stayed away from Jay, I didn't want him to be, put hit, put him in jeopardy by approaching him. So I was only going by what I could see. The, the, but, but, um, the work would have already started um, to hire the lifeguards for this summer, if it were going to open this summer. And it, and, um, and Marilyn pointed out to me that, I mean, even if we could hurry up and get something done to open it this summer, she wouldn't have had time. Nobody would have time to get the staff and get them up and trained. So it was just, it was a goal that, that won't be achieved, but hopefully in a year it will be achieved. And so I wanted to mention that too, and, and, uh, uh, it's really different being on, on this side of the dais instead of the other side, you know, where we, we actually do have access to the, to, to accurate information now, and during the campaign, we simply didn't. All right.
One more thing.
Yes, Eric.
Um, and again, I guess you guys, Sharon, Jay, and I'm, and Wayne. That's not Wayne. Okay.
Turn it over, turn it over.
Josh, okay. Um, I don't think, I, 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 I highly doubt that this happened with the previous administration, but, uh, I just want to ask, I mean, requesting that the county cede the land to us that the water park sits on could save us a year in permitting or, you know, processes. Is that something that the, that the previous administration pursued?
I know they did get the Callum's complex given to the town and, uh,
There's precedent there.
Even though there are two parcels owned by the county, there were previous agreements that were different than the ballfield for the water park, um, that convoluted that agreement. So I think there, it was cut and dry to get what we got, which was phenomenal. And I think not to muddy the water, they went after that. Um, but I don't think it's going to be feasible to ask the county to give us that property. That's the way I understand it, but.
I mean, we could always ask and they can always say no, you know?
Correct. I know, I know there were two different agreements, um, so not to muddy the water, they went after the big picture, but I don't know how much the other one was pursued.
I, I recall there was a lot of negotiation back and forth with Calvert County uh, for, you know, build, us building the water park, them building the community center uh, on that parcel of land over there and, and, uh, but, but it's been a long time ago and my memories faded a little bit. All right, let's move on to the next item, uh, capital connections. Um, Samelia, you drafted this, right? All right, uh, in your packet, you've got a, uh, a notice to residents regarding the capital connection charges. Um, have you, have you all had a chance to read it? Has everybody had a chance to read it? Um, do we want to read it to the public? Okay, Samelia, you get to read it. You wrote it, you read it.
That's fair enough. Your residents, we are reaching out regarding the recent issuance of capital connection charges related to applications submitted over two decades ago. The mayor's administration is aware of the concerns this matter has raised and is committed to addressing it in a thorough and transparent manner. To ensure that no residents experience undue hardships while we review this situation, the mayor's administration has decided to temporarily pause the billing for these charges. Please be assured that during this phase, your water and sewer services will not be interrupted. We are actively working to better understand the circumstances surrounding these charges and to evaluate the appropriate course of action. While this process requires careful examination, we are committed to reaching a resolution within 90 days. Next steps would be an investigation timeline. The pause on billing will remain in effect until April 30th, 2025, by which time we aim to finalize our review and decide. Resident engagement, we value your input and will provide opportunities for public comment at upcoming town council meetings. We thank you for your patience and understanding as we work diligently to address this matter. If you have any questions or require additional information, please contact the town administrator.
Oh, anybody got any questions or comments? Yes, Ken.
If we, my question is, if it, thank you. If it's decided, um, determined that we are going to remove the capital connections, um, how would that impact the people who have already paid for these capital connections? Uh, what would be the reimbursement for them?
Um, to the best of my knowledge, um, there hasn't been any payments on those large fees that were put on the last water bills. Am I right, Sharon, do you know? You know, I don't think anybody, so I, so everybody is being treated equally.
But ha, nobody's paid those capital connections over two decades?
No, 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 the ones that were put on the last water and sewer bills. Okay, that's what I'm referring to.
Okay.
And, and so no, nobody has paid them. We have an expert in the room, but I'm not going to make her come back up to the podium.
There's a question, a comment.
Okay, will you come on up?
Houston, managed Horizons on the Bay, 8501 Bayside Road. Um, I don't know if the council is aware, um, we received one of those capital connections. So on one of the water bills for one of the common area taps at that building, I have a $70,000 balance. I know some of that is water and sewer use that I would like to pay, and some of it is the capital connection plus late fees and penalties that have been added on. So while you're working through the 90 days of trying to figure out who is actually going to owe what, it would be very beneficial for us who receive these bills that want to pay our actual water bills to know those differences. So if you could take those connection fees off and resend out the bills so I can at least pay the minimum balances that I need to pay, and then going forward, we'll be able to figure out what's going on with the cap, connection fees, if that makes sense.
Makes perfect sense, can you send me an email?
Oh, we're meeting tomorrow, so yes. Yes.
All right, good, all right.
Okay, I'm one of the ones that got the $30,000 one, okay? And I think it is very unfair that we have to wait another 90 days for you to decide to take it off my bill or say I don't even owe it from 19 years ago. I'm not somebody that just did it. I'm 19 years into this. I even have proof which was sent by the last administration that I didn't owe it back then. And it's not fair for me to have to wait another 90 days to get mine released. You know, there's plenty, there's 22 different projects in my area alone that I can almost guarantee you didn't get these notices. Because I've gone door to door. So, two choices here. Pick one. Remove it immediately, give me an apology, or see me in court. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb, we'll take it under advisement.
We know how many of these were sent out?
We have a record of, of six that have been brought to us.
I've only know of three. We have a list of those or, or how much they were?
I do, but I don't have it out here. I mean, I can get that to you after the meeting. All right, let's move on. Um, Board of Appeals regarding voting by its members. Got this.
Yes, um, it was, it was brought to my attention that, um, in the December, uh, Board of Appeals meeting, uh, the attorney on the Board of Appeals, uh, mentioned that if any member of the Board of Appeals had missed a meeting, that they would be unable to vote uh, at the end, uh, when it came time for the Board of Appeals to vote. And it seems to me that this, uh, changed horses midstream. The, the members of the Board of Appeals had never heard that. And two of the members who have missed meetings, uh, one's in the medical profession, the other were, serves in public safety. It's not like they were going out to, with their friends at a bar. But now, after serving over a year, they're told that they could give their comments just as a citizen of the town versus, uh, a member who has actually sat on the, the appeal board for over a year now. I mean, I believe they've met 37 times, but it seems, uh, uh, the attorney for the Board of Appeals referenced that this was, uh, based on, uh, town charter and that i- it was, uh, on the books as a, as an ordinance. Well, I just want to offer that, I don't think in the history of the Board of Appeals that we've ever had a case that wasn't resolved in the, in the initial meeting. It, you know, when the case was brought before the Board of Appeals, it was, it's usually, my experience has been, it's resolved that night or at that meeting, it doesn't continue. So we've never had this precedent before where we've had an appeal, uh, brought to the Board of Appeals that has gone on over a year now, and it seems summarily unfair to me that we were changing horses midstream. Both of those members, uh, now we're told they cannot vote and, uh, they could just present themselves as a town citizen. They've spent a year, uh, they've missed, I know the one, uh, member has missed three meetings, but it was solely due, due to work. And prior to that, uh, he has served for, uh, since 2022. So I just wanted to bring that, uh, because I believe only the town council can change that, uh, situation.
And, and I, I reached out to Fred Sussman, who was the one that made that determination. And, um, he, he, I'm going to just read his reply to you because what he says is ac- uh, uh, actually in accordance with the town code. Uh, it says the, uh, section 290 dash 32 of the town code, which is a zoning, zoning ordinance, addresses the town's Board of Appeals. Uh, section 290 dash 32 dot C dot, uh, three in parentheses, um, deals with records and decisions of the board as relevant to your inquiry, he's talking to me. This section provides in, in relevant part, and in quotes, "All actions or decisions of the board shall be taken by resolution in which three members present during the proceedings must concur." And, um, so he says, "So a member who misses a meeting may participate in the board's deliberations on the matter and may vote on the matter, but the member's vote may not be counted toward the board's decision unless the member votes in the same way at least that three other members of the board." Um, he says, "I have seen other zoning ordinance that allow a board member who misses a meeting or hearing to be part of the board's decision if the board member reviews the recording and re- and records of what transpired during the meeting or hearing that was missed, however Chesapeake Beach zoning ordinance does not contain such provision." So I think, um, as much as we don't like that, um, I think that that is what our code currently says. Um, so, um,
Well, I, I understand, I understand what the code says, but I think, um, with any commissioner board, you should say that, that should have been known to every member on that board. And especially when you have a case that's going over a year, I mean, we've never had that. So although, you know, Mr. Sussman has advised, he's following town code, he should have said that somewhere along the line, not before, a month before, we're opening this to public comment and now we're getting ready to vote. So now those people who have sat there, those members who have been there for one year are told like, no, uh, just like any citizen, you can offer your comments. And, and I think, I think this is an exception. I, I hate to say it, but the Board of Appeals, they, they review variances. This should be a variance because obviously, uh, for people who have sat one year and now told, uh, well, you basically, you might as well just be a citizen and just show up and give your opinion. I, I, I think it's, uh, I, they should have known that from the get-go.
Uh, yeah, and of course, none of us were here in this position at the get-go of that proceeding.
Is it too late to give them a variance for that?
Well, I knew it.
We'd have, the ordinance, the zoning ordinance would have to be amended to, in order to change that. And it seems to me that maybe there's an opportunity to amend the zoning ordinance and do it before this, when is the, when, when's the final resolution of this expected?
Well, I know the Board of Appeals is, I think, meeting next week and then they're opening it to public comment and people are.
The same meeting or at a subsequent meeting?
Um, this, next, next week's meeting. But I don't know when they're, I don't know if that meeting, they typically only meet for an hour and a half. Um, I don't know if they're voting on the whole, um, on the case at that time. on the case at that time. I just know that they're opening it to public comment.
Well, let me be clear. I, I gather from what you're saying that you feel strongly that every member of, of that commission should be able to vote. Am I correct in, in that?
That's correct. If I've sat here for one year, listening to meetings and I, I don't know, I've been to many of those meetings and they're reviewing binders of information.
I understand. I, I've sat in on a, on a, a few of them, which was enough for me to see what was going on and I haven't been back. But at, at any rate, I think we need, we don't have our attorney here tonight. She's out of the country. But I think we will research this with the attorney and see if we can do an emergency change to the zoning ordinance that removes that provision so that the other members could vote.
Thank you. I mean, even if it's just in this instance.
Well, I wouldn't do it that way. I mean, we, we either gonna, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna change it. And, and, and what Sussman says in here is that this is not, not in all, all jurisdictions. You know, it's, I don't know how unique it is to Chesapeake Beach. And I don't, you know, this code's been around for a long time. But we'll, we'll take a look at it. And so just on our to do list, we'll reach out to Alyssa tomorrow.
Thank you. I appreciate your consideration.
I, I definitely would love to hear what the attorney said. I support it 100%. Would ask that the, the folks who, you know, if this was to pass, they would be required to like certify some sort that they did go back and watch.
Absolutely.
That, that needs to be.
Very good point. Very good point. Yeah. Yes. Yes. In, in, in our code, I don't believe so. I think we would need to modify our code. But I, but I think it's, it's our, it's in our control, I think. And, and the consensus or the feeling I'm getting from my fellow council members here is that they would like to see this changed. And if we did it in an emergency ordinance, which would take effect essentially immediately, it seems like we could accomplish this and do it cleanly. And I, I think everybody understands. I mean, does anybody not understand? Have any other questions? I mean, about this?
I have one question.
Yes, go ahead, Laura.
So is this coming from the members that can't vote, they want to vote?
Two, two of the members, two of the five.
They miss.
Five want to vote on this. And, okay.
And this has been going on for over a year, right?
Absolutely.
Not hard to miss a meeting.
It started.
You miss a meeting in a year.
November 23rd is when the case began.
Yeah, so just, we should do this quickly too because I think that a zoning ordinance amendment requires a certain amount of time to be in the public view before you can make.
Emergency ordinance.
Oh, I don't know.
It's done quicker. And this would definitely fall into that category. Making a note. Thank you, counsel. That's helpful. All right. Now, the next piece is just informational. We've hired a new zoning administrator. It is Sarah Franklin. She is an attorney. And she also happens to be the mayor of Upper Marlboro. And I believe some of you know her quite well. And so she will be, she, we, you know, we, we met and I interviewed her and have decided that she is the person that's going to be our new zoning administrator. And.
That's full time, mayor?
I'm sorry.
That's full time?
No.
Oh.
No, as needed, you know, like so many of the other consultants to the town.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm pleased about that, I think. And, and to be quite honest with you, it's going to save the town a lot of money. Okay.
I, I, I would, just real quick, I know it's informational, but, and I did ask Samelia if, if I could meet with her in advance. I, I think our town, like I'm, I would be intrigued to hear her perspective of how she approaches zoning administration. I think she's been involved in the last administration in a slightly different capacity, but she was quoted by the prior town administrator as the authority of why a lot of permits and stuff were denied. So I'm intrigued to, to understand her perspective. I think that too often we were not in support of finding a way to yes for our residents when it made sense, right? Like thinking through the ramifications, obviously, of secondary and tertiary effects. But I think we were too often finding a way to no versus yes and maybe reading the code incorrectly and, and overly aggressively. So I, I would, I know you interviewed her. I, I would appreciate just hearing her perspective on how she plans to approach this in our town.
Because. I think that's, that's fine. I, I will share with you that the former zoning administrator, Chris Jakubiak, is somebody that I brought on board way back when, you remember Chris? And he was fair. He didn't make everybody happy, but he did follow the code. And, and so when, when the situation, when Holly Wall, who had assumed that role, you know, left the town's employee, that left us with the vacancy. So I reached out to Chris and I said, give me some suggestions of somebody that you think might fill this role for the town. And he immediately pointed to Sarah because she used to work in his firm. And so, and she, she knows how to do this work. And so that's, that's why I interviewed her. And, and so I think that, I think she's going to be good. And we, we need to be careful that, and I know, I know Chris used to irritate a lot of people because he was right by the book. And if it was in the code, that's what it was. That's way, that's where his rulings came down. And I think Sarah's going to be exactly the same way. So if somebody's got an issue, it may be that the issue is not with the individual who's doing this, the enforcement. It's with the code. All right, and so that's, but I'll just share that with you.
Yeah, and I, I think this will get back to a different discussion on permit modernization. I, I think this really comes back to, like, if you can't do something, what's the next steps? And those next steps have been missing for a lot of our residents. Like that was a huge issue when I was walking around. I mean, like, look at the, when we get the list, and I'm sharing, when you put it together, you see the list of all the, the linked or, or like overdue violations of permitting. There are a lot of people on that list who would like to resolve their permits and have zero direction on how to do it. And when I talked with the prior administration, it was always the town planner, which that's what Sarah's, Ms. Franklin's position was before as town planner. She was the justification for the notices of why something would be denied. So that's what drives me back is she's being promoted into a new position towards zoning administration, but she was, who was being referenced of all the denials. That's fine. If it's by the code, it's by the code. We got to solve that. I, I would put it back to the town to figure out how do we resolve some of these permitting challenges that that, those decisions make.
And do you have specific examples of that that we could use for reference?
I can hand you a whole bunch of them.
Okay, well, why don't you do that?
Yes, I will.
Give them to our administrator.
Mayor, I just want to say that I, as the chair of the planning and zoning, and I've worked with Sarah Franklin and she, you know, I, I, I think there is a, in that position, when people want a permit and they want to do whatever work assignment, work they have, it's, they want it approved. And I don't think it's always easy to deny somebody. But I think my experience with Ms. Franklin, as you mentioned, she's also the mayor of Upper Marlboro. So she knows, she's well aware of how ordinance and laws are and, and compliance in a very objective manner. And I think that my experience with her, I've also worked with Chris Jakubiak on planning and zoning commission. And Ms. Franklin, there was never any issue that the planning and zoning commission was addressing. She always provided insight, her perspective, a memo, and everything was fact based. Her recommendations were, you know, based on policy of law, ordinance. And, and I think you'll find her that way. She's not arbitrary, she's not capricious. It's that, but it's not a popular, to deny a permit is never an easy thing. And people are unhappy when they can't get what they want. So.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, I think I, I also appreciate Sarah. And I know she is very literal with the zoning ordinance. So I think that we would do ourselves a big favor by addressing issues of grandfathering because it's, it's the grandfathering issues that are holding people up. Things that were built and maybe didn't have old permits. I know there's people in Bayview Hills that weren't able to rebuild existing decks. So my, my opinion was we, we should find a way for them under a grandfathering clause rather than try to adjust the code to beat every single retrofitted property. So I'm, I'm sure there's a way to do that and address grandfathering in general. I think that would relieve a lot of the permitting issues that people are having because Sarah is very literal. She's going to want to read everything literally. So if she literally has a grandfathering clause that will help her say yes to residents, maybe we can provide that for her.
Appreciate that comment.
She won't be making the decisions, right? She'll be bringing it to the planning commission?
No, she has decision on, on anything that's not a category one.
Okay, let's move on. All right, I have listed here outstanding PIA and legal requests, town administrator salary, and that came from Dan DeVal.
What is PIA?
Public information access.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
But I don't know what there is to say about that.
Just that they're ongoing. There was not, there was not any transition material provided when it came to moving between administrations. And so there are outstanding PIA requests for the town administrator's salary, but we don't have readily access to it. So we've been working with the ombudsman for the state attorney's office, who has reached out to us regarding one case. We were able to get an extension so that we have time to gather that information. And we also have another request for similar information, different term period. But we're working with both of those individuals to make sure that we are able to respond to those requests in the time that has been allotted.
Will that include the severance package or is that separate?
So the, we've been working with Alyssa Legal primarily because we want to make sure that we're doing it by the letter of the law. And when it comes to PIA requests, you typically respond to the request that is given. So if they didn't ask specifically for like salary and wages or like benefits, then you just give them what they ask for. It's a little challenging because we have multiple requests regarding the same thing, but every, each person is asking for something slightly different. And so we want to make sure that we are responding to the intent of the request, but also making sure that aligns with law.
But we can request that outside of a PIA, correct? Like as, as a council to be transparent with the town?
In theory, anytime anyone requested it is a PIA request.
We can go that route if we need to.
Okay.
So we don't have salary accounting information or anything like that?
The person who would have that information is our town treasurer, who is currently out on maternity leave. And so she has been responsive, but we do want to be mindful of the fact that she is on maternity leave, which is a protected time. But outside of that, it was the town administrator who had that access. So there's no one else who has those records. And there was no continuity between the previous administration, which has made getting information hard.
When the previous town administrator left, it was just out the door, see you later, goodbye. Samelia is picking up all of this on her own. And there was no transition. It was like, see you later. And she's trying to pick up the pieces, so.
Right, but I mean, so do we, do we have someone currently who is, you know, handling the, the books and.
Treasurer.
She is on maternity leave. So she does have that information.
And we have an assistant.
And she, did she provide it to us?
We have time set aside to talk through it. It hasn't been provided yet though.
Okay, other, other comments on that?
Who has been denounced as the PIA holder or responder to all these PIAs? Is it going to be you, Samantha?
Typically, what happens is it goes, those types of requests go through the town clerk. My understanding is that because for lots of reasons that I can't tell you why, any request that involved something that pertained to the previous town administrator was removed from the town clerk's responsibility and then given to the town. The town administrator took it upon herself and then was working with the formal, former council to respond to those. The challenge is, is that some of these requests came in more than four months ago, right? And so that, the individual then has the ability to seek legal counsel to support them in bringing a case against the, the town. So that's where we are now. But typically, this is something that is handled by the town clerk.
Okay, so the 22 outstanding PIAs that the town now has in their records, you will be answering to them in the next 60 to 90 days as per the ombudsman?
Oh.
Or will we have to get a different ombudsman to request the 22 of them to be answered?
What I would say is if you have access to those 22 outstanding, if you could send them to me, because the, the reality is I only know what's outstanding when I get an email from legal or a lawyer saying, hey, we haven't received a response to this. So if there are other things that you know of that are outstanding, please send them to me and I will, I'll work to address them. Say it again.
Anybody that did a PIA to the town administrator from 2024 or 2023 to up to date so that they can know to send them to you?
I can absolutely do that. And what I will likely do is work with our town clerk because prime, the initial request would have gone through her. And so I want to make sure that we have, we're aligned on our internal records. But absolutely, we can do that.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I just, I, I sure hope that this, and I believe that it will, this administration will be judicious and return these FOIA or PIA requests as soon as possible. And I think that's really important to the public and they deserve it. So I'd like to see this get resolved.
I'm ridiculous.
Well, yeah, of course, but I mean, there's ways to stall, clearly.
Obviously, we got, we've seen examples of that. All right, let's move on. And as far, the, the Rod and Reel has requested a lot of information too, but I, I don't know what the status of that is. I think that goes way back and I don't, there hasn't been any response to that that I'm aware of.
Right, so we'll meet with Rod and Reel's legal counsel tomorrow with Alyssa to get more clarity on what that request is.
Eric Blitz? Do you know?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, moving along. Rich Field Station Developer Status. Fids, Construction Obligations and Bond. What is there to be said about that? Do you have anything there or?
Well, I guess, yeah, I mean, it's worth talking about. In, in regards to Councilwoman Blackwelder's comments last meeting about the bond, I think it's a great idea. But I do think, from my understanding, it's been pursued before. And the, the problem is, is that is the, is the, the undeveloped area beyond the road that is not final paved? If there's an undeveloped area beyond and that road would be used as a construction road, he's not required to final pave it until the construction is done and the road would no longer be used by construction vehicles. That's what I think might be worth looking into, but I'm pretty sure that's true. It's typically the case with all residential construction. And I do believe that we've discussed that before. If there's a way to make a claim on the bond, that would. If there's a way to make a claim on the bond, that would be great to have someone else pay for it. But again, we've we've dealt with this. These residents, not me in particular, I don't drive on that road, but I mean, if I did, I would be furious. Unfinished is rough pave. There's utilities sticking up out of the street. People have lived there for probably 15 years. Possibly. And, you know, it's it's a disgrace and they really shouldn't have to deal with that. And, you know, I'm definitely, I guess I haven't. I guess I have a reputation of being fiscally responsible, to put it a certain way. But this is one item that that I would support the town stepping in if we if we needed to, if we had no other no other avenue, and it is something that I'd like to. I would hope that we can get done within the year.
Well, we'll keep it on the to do list for sure.
Mayor, if I might, sorry, just just to give you a little bit of history from the new council and administration. We we did step in as the town and do some work in that development. Just for the public and everyone, they are tax paying town residents. The town has not accepted block S back there. The developer walked away 13 years ago. So we paved actually from the three way stop sign and took the bond from the developer. We stepped in. There was two residents down there that had inverted sewer lines, lived with for years. The town stepped in, had to communicate with the county and we the bond on the last administration did, and there's two other actions. So moving forward, the last administration worked really hard on the new PWAs with the developer to fix these things before we would let them move forward with any new construction, fix what you started. And that's where we left off. They wanted to move forward without remedying the situation you spoke of in other situations. One thing I'd also like to throw out there, there was a settlement between the HOA and the developer that the town doesn't have the privy to that results. The developer feels like I've paid off my mistakes. It's I'm ready to move forward. So there's a lot of details. The public doesn't know the town, but we've worked very hard. You know, I'll give you a history of my time here. We've spent more money in Richfield Station from things that were. I'm not going to point fingers at anyone, but town had to step in and fix millions of dollars, the saddles, the roads, the storm drain. That's why the HOA sued the developer. So there's a lot of details. I agree we need to move forward. Those are town citizens been living on unpaved road 13 years. You should try to snow pile, and we do that even though it's not the town's. In theory, right now, we should be back charging that developer because we don't own it, but I am going to take care of town citizens, right? So there's a lot to it. I have details. We can move forward, but I 100% agree. Come build it out or we finish it and get out of town. Something's got to happen. 13 years. Sorry, can you tell them passion about it?
I agree. He needs to get out of town.
I agree.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea how much it would cost us to to?
I mean, all those numbers were there. They're in the existing PWAs we have now. I won't mention names, but the developer came back, so I'm going to do X, Y, and Z. Didn't happen. We're going to do this, this, and this. Then the bond's expired. Let's make. Let's reenter a new bond. There's been a lot of administrative time, a lot of meetings, a lot of things, but nothing has happened. So we need to look into that and and maybe set a status quo. Timeline doesn't happen, the town steps in, pull the bond, even if we have to pay what's not covered in the bond and however we do it to move forward, I agree, and I have some information details to share with anyone to try to get this expedited because it'd be better on everyone. Mayor, if you remember, you're the one that rented the temporary fence so the citizens would have access to the railway trail that was finished. They couldn't get to. Well, you know that temporary fence is still there.
I know it is. Well, you and I walked through there not long ago.
So 100% on board. Let's work together and see what we can do. I do want to say the prior administration has met, bent over backwards on everything they could do to expedite this going forward without taxpayers paying more money. It just never came together.
Well, I'm glad you've got the institutional history and that'll be valuable. I mean, you you need to sit down with Samelia and 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 talk this through and and maybe figure a course of action headed, you know, getting this squared away. And I also thought that that evergreen tree that you parked next to when we were up there. How tall was that when it was when we first started out?
It was like this tall.
Like this, and how tall is it now? 20 feet?
30.
30 feet? That's how that's how long. Nothing's happened.
Well, can I? Can I ask if we were to proceed with that plan, like, how long would it take for us to come up with the like? I know we have some estimates, but like to just say like, hey, this is the option. I mean, we can come up with a timeline and stuff, but like, how long would it take? Like on your side, Jay, and I know you're a busy man, especially recently, but.
I think what's what's been the hiccup is the developer has said, hey, we're ready. We're going to move forward. The town has presented. Here's your PWA. I actually came up with a punch list, said you're going to fix these issues outstanding before you start building more. There's, you know, I'm meeting citizens of the town that have issues for 13 years. So I'm actually the one that said, look, I'm all aboard, but you're going to fix these issues before you create more. And they started partial that. Some of them were resolved. Some of them we had to do ourselves and pull bonds. So the towns are willing, let's get it done. I think the developer has issues on his end of doing it, but we can invite him in. What's the real deal? What's going on and move accordingly? The town can definitely step in, spend taxpayer dollars, look for bonds pulling or the developer to reimburse it. And then then if they build or not, it's not such a big deal, right? We want it finished to the trail, but if they're not, let's do it ourselves and move on. But I will say, working hand in hand with the last administration, meeting with the attorneys of the developer and the town, many times we really pushed to one or the other, and it's just been a revolving door.
It sounds like that's the thing that needs to stop. We need to have identifiable plan of actions and we need to have deadlines in place and what the repercussions are because this circular thing is a lot of things we're not getting anything done.
Well, you and Samelia and I need to sit down here in the office sometime and work out a plan of action.
Definitely.
I mean, I think it's it's been it's clearly established that the developer doesn't want to do anything. Even from an HOA perspective, I was on the HOA and and we needed to discuss some things with the developer. And forever, the only way you can you could communicate with him was by fax. Yeah, I mean, he doesn't want to do anything. And it's it's not going to have. It's not going to change. He doesn't want to work with the town. He doesn't want to do anything. So, you know, we are definitely after 13 years, we ought to know by now that some drastic measures are probably going to be needed to to move forward.
Agreed. Okay, next item. Chesapeake Village safe routes to school. Who's going to discuss this?
I I asked for this to be included in the agenda, and all this is is the current status.
Okay.
As reported to me from the previous administration about the Chesapeake Village sidewalk. So I would appreciate any reports from any staff that might have more information than me. And, you know, any legwork that can be done from staff to find out where this is and how we can move it forward. What are the details involved? And and you're shaking your head, so would you like to comment?
Sure, we briefly discussed that with the town engineer today, and I think he's going to fill us in on the council meeting. But if I recollect right, the the state did come back to us with more money to work on this. It's an MOU and a design, and the town did agree last administration. And so now, the way I understand it, it's back in the state's court, but I will let the town engineer next week fill you right in up to date.
That's great. Thank you.
That is the last item on our agenda. Does anybody have anything else? Say no.
Hey, it's your game you're missing.
I just want to make sure. I'm a slow reader, so if I could have if the agenda and the documentation with the agenda can be put out five days for our work session or town council meeting, that that would be helpful for me.
Be honest with you, it didn't get done that early.
Yeah, but it wasn't too much.
That is my fault.
Oh, so you're the one?
I'm the one.
Okay.
I'm the one. I'm just just saying.
The three days.
Well, I just lead time. I mean, and I realize, I mean, some people work and they just don't have the availability to to read, especially when you've got, you know, 40, 50 pages to read. So I I just want to be versed.
It's definitely our intention to get to the council sooner. We are just in this catch up period because we're having to untangle a lot of things to get clarity, but we're definitely on that track, that path.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else for the good of the order?
Well, one one thing for me, I do want to say that for Samelia, you've come into a lot without really having the transition to be able to for the whole council, for all of us, we don't have a transition in place to be able to smoothly get things going and picking up the baton from the last administration, which puts us at a temporary disadvantage. So getting our infrastructure together, learning how to work together, things like that. We've been kind of shooting from the hip a little bit, but we'll get our stride. And we want to make sure that the people who voted for us and got us up here take that into consideration that we are fighting for you, but we are still putting the pieces together because we weren't handed this in the way that would make sense for one administration to the next. So if anybody is watching, clearly nobody showed up this week like they did the last time. But if anybody is paying attention, we want to make sure that it's on record that we're getting these things together and that our town administrator is really, you know, putting up a lot of work for less money. You know?
So far.
So far.
So far. No.
Yeah, so, you know.
Till we pass that emergency ordinance, it was for no money.
We we are fighting to make things right. We are looking into things. We are going to be. We don't want the circular motions and we don't want to reinvent wheels either. But we want to be treated as such when we're up here because we do care. I just want to make sure there's no.
Well stated, and I I appreciate that comment, and it's my intention, and I know everybody up here, it's our intention to serve the citizens of this town well with honesty, integrity, and with the best interest, best interest of the citizens of the town. And so and for, you know, to support the employees with what they need. And it's, you know, there's a new sheriff in town. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment, a beater.
All in favor, aye. I'm not asking for the no's. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for supporting us.